Good morning, we've got our bagels. Welcome to our study session that we scheduled just two days ago. Thursday, October 30th, 2025. We'll go ahead and do roll call, Jake Collette will be late, so we'll go ahead and excuse him for the roll call.
Brad Eller, board member.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Eric Campbell, director.
Jason Wong, business administrator.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Breon Diedrickson, board member.
Garrett Peterson, superintendent.
Okay, well, welcome. This is the result of our public hearing the other day on Tuesday night. And we're going to continue our discussions. We tabled the boundary proposal and we're going to continue our discussion on the boundaries. And we have some data. We're taking a deeper dive into the lines and the data and just have further discussion for a little bit. So I'm actually going to turn the time over to superintendent. So he has a kind of a structure of things that we can talk about.
So there's a couple of things. As we've talked between now and last time, some data that we wanted to look at. So I'll kind of record and Eric's the one that collects all of this stuff and works with our demographer. But one of the questions that was pulled out there is how quickly or is it possible right now to move the people over in the Sawmill, Center Creek area into Old Mill Elementary? So that there would be a consistent feeder pattern there. I think the number was 143 students, right Eric?
Uh, approximately 130.
130 students are sitting up in that area. If you look it on an elementary classroom thing, that's like five, maybe close to six classrooms. That is not feasible at this point. That is something that I would suggest, and I would always suggest that we keep our eye on our elementary boundaries and what's best. But an immediate move right there to have like five, six open classrooms at Old Mill does not exist at this point in time. So that's really not a feasible option at this time. Questions on that at all?
I know we don't have a crystal ball, but how far in the future do you think before that is a possibility?
I'd just say it depends on their growth in Old Mill.
And then one of the-
That is our, that is one of our areas that is, um, like there's a lot, there's a lot of developments, building homes that are bringing at least some kids. I think we lost three kids there last, in total enrollment, but it's a, so that is one of the places where we're getting quite a lot of growth. There's quite a lot that's planned for it in there.
Yeah, a lot of that area up in there too, where the growth is, is boundary to Daniels Canyon. And so I'd say, some might say we just keep our eye on it.
I know one of the emails we got mentioned shifting multiple elementary boundaries. Can we just speak to that where someone had said, can you take some of Old Mill and put them in JR Smith? And some of JR Smith to Midway or Heber Valley? Does that create an option to align elementary boundaries?
I would say that's something we haven't studied bad enough to be able to speak very well to at this point. I think that, again, I think we're always looking at our boundaries and the best boundaries. And I think this has forced us into a deeper look. We haven't done enough looking at that to see if that would be feasible.
Can I say from experience that-
Please.
The more schools you add changing boundaries, the more involved that that process needs to be or has been in the past. And so there's a lot more moving parts with that, a lot more things to look at. So it would, it would take a considerable amount of time, which it has in the past.
And the more disruption to families and kids.
All right, any other questions on that?
Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah.
Some other things that we came out at the last study session is looking at the areas. If you go back away, so I'll just state the road. So right now, in the proposal that went to hearing that got tabled, the, the boundary in the JR Smith area up on the north side of town was Heritage Parkway. One of the things that we had a desire to look at over the last couple of days was a little bit deeper look at pushing up to Coyote Parkway. And then we also, so if you look at scenarios from the past, that would have been scenario H. And then also we can look at River Road, which is scenario G. And so Eric's got some, a map for us to look at so we understand the kids in there. What, what you're going to see here is the kids that are currently attending middle school that live up in that area and where they're currently attending middle school. Which ones choice, how many choice? So that, this map will kind of show you guys that. And I do want to thank Eric, this was quick turnaround yesterday, so.
Welcome.
I need to thank our IT department who jumped in there. Because of the turnaround, we didn't go back to MGT for this stuff. We were just looking at our data based on our October 1 count. So what you'll see here is, is, this is in our GIS. We've basically just taken all of the, the middle school kids and we've pod them based on their, their addresses. We've aggregated those so that, you know, we're not gonna, you know, we get individual homes. We see if they got in a roof last week or something. But, but what we are looking at here is the circles, the size are about the number of kids that are there in that aggregate. The yellow are those kids that are attending Timpanogus Middle School. The red are those that are attending Rocky Mountain Middle School.
Right now.
Right now, currently. And so as you look at that, there is a mix. As you go through and just a brief count roughly, it's 25 students from this area are choicing to Timpanogus Middle School.
And when you say this area, are you talking about the neighborhood between Heritage and Coyote?
Yeah, so this area that's in shaded. So it's going from Heritage Parkway all the way up technically to Todd Hollow.
Show me where Coyote.
So Coyote, yeah, I think Brad, you know it's this one right in there.
Okay, got it.
So that is Coyote.
25 choosing to TMS out of how many?
Well, in this area, you have 35 that are going to Rocky Mountain Middle School in this shaded area.
Can you just scroll out so we can see the north a little bit more or is that it?
No, you can go up too. You can see there's kids going to Rocky Mountain there. There's one choicing to-
Okay. Got it, yeah, so thank you.
Elementary only.
No, this is all middle school.
I'm sorry, this is-
Yeah.
And, and so you have 314 kids, yellow you said is Tim?
Yellow is Tim.
And 310 kids at Rocky, is that right?
That 310, that's the school label with the state.
Oh, okay.
314.
School number. Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
No, we don't have that many kids up there. Or you could be building another middle school.
Those numbers are just school codes, not amount of students next to them.
Yeah, that's, that's the school.
This, this is the 34% or 25% or 23%.
The 30 or whatever that is.
33%, yeah.
Okay.
And, and say it one more time.
Well, and that was the, those percentages are based on the elementary kids. I'm just, we're just pulling the, so, you know, we're just pulling the middle school kids.
It gives you an idea of how many people are choosing right now.
Gives you a feel for the split of kids.
And can you say how many again are school choosing?
Approximately 35 are going to Rocky Mountain currently from that area that are slated to go there. And, and approximately 25 in this area that are choosing.
Choosing. So, so 60 kids total-ish from this area?
Just in this, yeah.
Would you say majority of that is that, that hit, that Cove area right there?
So the Cove is in here, you have, this is the Cove area.
That's where Cove Park.
And this is Valley Hills.
Yeah, I see it.
And so, which is, you know, what we kind of heard and expected that. More of these in this area, Valley Hills were choicing to Timpanogus. And a few of those came and spoke. And then we also have a number that are just going where their boundary has been.
So if we look at pushing that north, the closer you get up to Coyote, you can see a majority of those kids do attend Rocky Mountain right now. The closer you get up towards Coyote, like in the Cove Park area down this, these are the new ivory homes down in here that have gone in.
The red is Rocky.
Kids or so down in that area.
God, it, that's interesting.
The further you move up north, of course, you're going to have people just attending Rocky, I mean.
And the reason for the choice, do they have to give that? Is it mainly due to proximity or because they're split and they're following a friend group?
They don't have to.
They don't have to say, okay.
We are going to ask for it on the, but we do want to know what is forcing people different ways now. We're really going to push that when they pull up that area from they actually.
Some, some of the people I've talked to go to Rocky, Rocky Mountain because that's the transportation that's provided for them to go there. And so they weren't really complaining about it, but they're like, well, that's, that's where the bus is. That's where the bus goes, so.
But it's not like they would complain to go down to Timpanogus either. They're just, that's where the bus goes.
Right.
Any questions on this at all?
Very fascinating, thank you.
I think that gets to kind of some of the key data points that we were looking at coming out of the hearing the other night. Eric, I'm wondering if you could kind of pull up this one too?
Just, just that thing or the, I have the maps.
Yeah, we can look at the maps, Eric.
That's okay, is that?
So this is going back, you know, more looks, the, the things we'd want to look at are in existing scenarios. We had, we created lots of them. So you can look down, and the big thing we want to look at is numbers. To, based off of that, so H.
You want to go to H?
Yeah, go to A. Well, go to D. Well, let's go to B.
C, go to C.
This is just for our review. So there's, there's the numbers. The pure feeder system. Starting large at Deer Creek, evening, Wassatch being, you know, 50 kids bigger. Go to D.
And D is our current proposal, I'm just going to put a note here, right?
It was, was the proposal, yeah.
Was, yeah.
Yeah, I, it still is, it's just tabled, so that's our proposal. You can see starting out again, because those are very similar in numbers. Go to H.
And, and then just so I can take notes, remind me, H is, is that River Road?
H is pushing to Coyote.
Coyote.
So again, starting bigger, not as big at Deer Creek. And over time, Wassatch becomes bigger. And then go to G, which we really haven't talked much about, but G, G goes to River Road, right Eric?
Oh, yeah, sorry, probably. Yes, that is just south of River Road, basically going up there, it's not River Road on that side. What road is it? 130.
That road 32, isn't it?
32, that's what it is. But what, what we did is took a line with those roads that empty onto Route 32. We kind of, kind of took those, because there's some developments that are already happening in there. So those roads that access from 32, we tried to capture in that line. So it doesn't follow 32 exactly.
So help me, the light where you would turn to go to Midway or to Francis, you're following that road east, is what you're saying? Okay.
So those are the different things that we wanted to kind of review back as we go through things. And then.
Can I ask a question on this?
No.
We're not talking anymore. The 9%, remind me, at one point, Jason, I thought you said was over 10% gap? We start to get worried about the numbers or where do we start to worry about too big of a gap between schools? Maybe I'm remembering wrong, I thought it was 10.
But also remember, we said that the middle school numbers is, are more accurate than the high school. Because for whatever that's worth.
You see people drop off in the high school, fill in all the forms, right?
That's where, that's for free and, that's for the diversity and demographic.
Right.
So you can see like middle school on this side. My eyes have always gone to the middle school because that's what's coming up for real. Brad asked for elementary.
I'm just reading my, yeah. At what point, what gap are we getting worried about being not equitable?
Yeah, I would probably look around, just, I mean, I don't have any scientific number, but about 10% or so. You're like, hmm, we're getting a little bit of a gap there between the two schools that, that I would start getting concerns. So go to H on that.
Yeah, can we go to, can we go to H? And then I want to ask Adam a couple of questions. Can we go back to the map where it shows the-
Where the kids are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our GIS. So Adam, you're- You can see middle school's 3% on this one.
So Adam, right now, is there a bus that goes up in that area for TMS?
There is not. We do have some students, yes, there is, but it doesn't go all the way up to Valley Hills. Because of the split, it's about a mile away. We have some students that school choice, that we have three of them that currently ride the bus to go to TMS that live on the other side that should go to Rocky Mountain. We've closed that bus to additional school choice riders because of the capacity of the bus. We're about 55 students right now on the bus.
Okay, so if we, if we, if we move that boundary to Coyote Ridge, is that what they call that? Coyote, if we move that boundary north to Coyote Ridge, does the bus go up further now?
Yeah, no, we have, we have, we would probably be forced to do another bus with the capacity of that current bus.
Okay.
We would, we would have to add a driver at least for the middle school route for the TMS.
And then there would not be any bus for Rocky Mountain Middle School that would go there.
No, they're above Coyote, yes.
For Rocky.
No, no, up to Coyote because they're all boundary to TMS now, so there is no bus available to go to Rocky Mountain.
Correct. South of Coyote.
Okay, thank you.
But there would be a bus that's up in the Coyote area, north of there.
Right, right, yeah.
That maybe some of those kids could go up and be a guest rider on, if there's room.
Just like they're doing now.
Okay, okay, so that, so, so it may not stop on Callaway Drive or whatever now and take them to RMS. But if someone on Callaway Drive said, no, we still want to go to, we still want to go to Rocky Mountain. They would say, okay, well, you got to go up above Coyote Ridge to the bus stop up there and, and we'll let you, because if there's room.
That access is there.
And currently our buses, the only place on Coyote we go, we stop only on, only on that road. Due to the construction that's currently going on. Eventually that will change.
Right, as more kids come into the area.
More available access roads on-
Yeah.
But that access is there and it's not?
And more light.
More light, that Coyote light is definitely helping.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
I think from a growth pattern, I think one of the things is we assume that area up there is going to continue to grow. And more kids are going to come in. And you can see kids are coming in. This area down here, where all those ivory homes went in, there's, there are quite a few middle school kids down in that area right now. So we assume that would be a growth area. Much like we've talked about the Center Creek and-
Hey, you can go Center Creek.
So I'm from Montclair, I'd always say Creek too. That, that, so your, your two growth areas would still remain in opposite boundaries, which I do, I personally believe is an important thing to look at.
Can I, Garrett?
Yeah.
So I just wanted, for the people who are online, we have a good amount of people listening, so just kind of wanted to, anybody jumping on right now. We're just, right now, looking at this northern, like the Coyote Lane area.
Heritage Parkway.
Heritage Parkway area of JR Smith Elementary School boundaries and Rocky, or Rocky Mountain boundary. The current Rocky Mountain boundary, so. Thank you for tuning in, anybody listening.
Any other questions on any of this data? All right, now that we've looked at it all, it's just time for an open discussion. What, what people saw the other night, what they're looking at, the thoughts that they've had. I would probably say let's do it this way, so there's a little bit of structure and then it's just an open conversation. But let's give each person a chance to, to kind of talk about what they're thinking based off of this data. And last night, maybe, or two nights ago, two nights ago, what they heard. Just anything you want to share, the thoughts that you've had and, and kind of where you are right now. So let's start with Breon and kind of go around and then let's just have an open discussion.
Okay. I guess where I'm at is we heard loud and clear, don't split the elementary schools at that meeting. We've looked at some of that data, so I guess my question is realizing that right now we can't align middle school boundaries with the current proposal. We can't shift Sawmill for my area, Sawmill, Center Creek into Old Mill. Are, I guess, what is the priority? Are we honoring feeder patterns? So, you know, are we not wanting to split elementary schools like we heard? Which then narrows it to the current options we've looked at, B or C, right? Those are the only two true scenarios that honor feeder patterns. So I guess that's, that's my question is-
Let's look at C real quick, sorry about that. Let's look at C. See if we can go pure feeder pattern, JR Smith and Old Mill, numbers are very similar to B. But you just push all the way up at that point.
So I guess that's, that's where I'm at, is if we heard concerns about elementary schools, we, we tabled it to look at those. We've looked at them, realized we can't align elementary boundaries right now with our current proposal. So are we to the point where we're going to make feeder patterns more of a priority? And then that would mean B or C are your options, right? Because they're the only true feeder patterns. Or I guess where are you guys at in regard to the priority of feeder patterns?
I mean, my question to that would be, we heard, we heard that, don't split the elementary schools, that's what we heard. If that meant you went to Deer Creek and we didn't split your school, would you be okay with that? Or is that a reason to say, don't split my school, hoping that you're still going to go to Wassatch? But if, if you don't do it, I'm still choicing to Wassatch anyway, right? Like-
Oh, I can speak to that from what I've heard personally and, and how it affects my own child. My daughter's in fifth grade, she's headed into sixth grade next year, right? Normally, we'd be going to Timpanogus. With the current boundary proposal, we'd be going to Rocky, except now my daughter's friend group is split in half. And for me, like, like I said in the meeting, I think two great schools. I don't have an issue with my kid going to either school. But where I do have an issue as a parent and what I've heard from my neighborhood, send them all to one or the other. Because my own daughter's friend group right now, thankfully for her, the majority of her friends, if we go with the current proposal, they're going to Rocky. But two of her close friends in her friend group are going by themselves, where the majority of their friend group are headed to Rocky, to temp. Now, can they school choice? Yes, but I think that is hard on middle schoolers to be the only two out of your close friend group to have to go by yourself to a whole new population. So feeder patterns is a priority for me and, and I have heard it is a legitimate reason, not just send me where. I've heard people say, keep them together, either school.
But in B, wouldn't they, I'm assuming those are in Sawmill, those two?
Those two are in Sawmill, so B they'd be at Wassatch, yeah.
So B they'd still-
Yeah, but if you went with C, the other feeder pattern, they'd all, then you're sending those Sawmill kids to Rocky.
My question to you is, have you heard from Sawmill parents after we put the proposal out?
I have not heard from any Sawmill parents after we put the proposal out.
Okay.
So Sawmill right now, we still, would be boundaried to-
TMS.
TMS.
Today, I see TMS.
I think that's, that's the split off part. I think just, just a couple of thoughts on that. I think when you put out a scenario, people come and express concerns about that part of the scenario that's, you know, that's impactful to them. If you put out B or C and had a public hearing, I think you'd hear a whole bunch of different priorities that wouldn't center around.
Feeder patterns.
Feeder patterns. You know, again, it's, you know, there, there will always be some that are going to argue either way. I'm just, I'm just saying that, that that, the current boundary that we put out, D, that does split both those schools is going to draw most comment about feeder patterns, right?
Because it doesn't, yeah, because it's the one that doesn't honor them. And I know I want to get around to everyone else, but just to finish where you asked where I was at. Jason, you just sparked something, you said D feeder pa, oh. One email that I thought was interesting that we got, you know, they asked for a rubric. They said, as you make that discussion, and maybe it's the teacher in me, but I was like, to defend the why of we picked this scenario and- and here, here's the priorities our community set." And, I mean, it's kind of like, my husband has to do a bid sheet, you know, when they pick a, when they do put an RFP out. And I was like, "Yeah, maybe it's like, okay, we picked this one because here's how it scores on proximity. Here's how it scores on feeder patterns." I mean, it, it does justify why we picked what we picked in the priority. And so that's the discussion we're having, right? Is, do we honor proximity? Which I think where people feel like D, that's what I've heard from you guys, kind of honors proximity. Do we honor feeder patterns, which are B or C? I guess it depends what priorities you rank highest.
If, if I could just maybe speak to this point. So in some of the public hearings, we heard those that were, worked for our neighboring district and said, "Yeah, we don't, we only have feeder patterns." And then I also reached out to a, a school district that has now kind of a similar pattern that we're going to have with five elementary schools going to two middle schools or not. And just said, "Okay, if you're keeping feeder patterns, how are you doing this?" Well, that one district that they mentioned that, they are, when I talk to the district, they're like, "Absolutely not. We're splitting elementary schools." And that was a bigger district, neighboring district. The one that has a, that will, that has what we will soon have. And they also, I'm like, "All right, how are you doing this?" And it's a district up just north of us, on the other side of the mountain. And they're like, "Yeah, we wish we could, but, but the five elementary schools", actually two of them are splitting to middle schools. And then there, the middle schools are actually splitting, going to the two high schools. So the kids are actually splitting twice. And so for whatever it's worth, I was just like, "How, how does a, a community our size kind of do that?" And I'm, and, and there might be some out there, but just those, because those were brought up, one that was similar to us, and then one that someone had spoken to in one of those public meetings. And they're not able to do it either yet.
Thank you for that, because I was wondering if other districts had split elementary schools as well.
And I appreciate you reaching out. I appreciate the research. I, I think it, it depends what priority we honor. If, if feeder patterns is a priority you honor, we do have two options, B or C, that work for that. If that's not the priority, there's other options that honor...
Other priorities.
Yeah. So that's...
Okay. Can you, let's see, put it on H? So H is really... D, we just bumped up the road, okay? So we're not making, so my thought... Okay, I was going to go up there, but...
You can.
Don't be your bana. Don't be your bana.
Bana. Nickname you, bana.
What would you like to point out?
Okay. Maybe just, can you zoom in?
Yeah. On the map?
Well, okay, so this is where I am. So scenario H is basically D, we're just bumping up to Coyote Road. This makes sense to me. Still, in my mind, this is a natural boundary. And honestly, so I reached out to a former, a past board member that was, I was on that boundary committee as a parent, was it 10 years ago?
To Rocky Mountain.
I wouldn't have known that.
It's for the middle school split, you're saying?
Twenty sixteen, nine years ago. And I spoke to a parent who has since moved, a year ago, from the Cove area, and a former board member who is involved in that. And just kind of rehashing what we did and why. And the board member recalls that it was because of numbers. They, they split Cove off. And, and the parent had her memory of, you know, she recalling what happened. So anyway, one thing I want to point out is, who is not speaking right now? And that's Sawmill. They're very quiet right now. So they were quiet, well, aside from the neighborhood meeting, right? They were quiet before, when the boundary proposal went out publicly. And they've been quiet after our meeting. They've not said anything. So to me, that, that speaks volumes of, you know, what they're not saying is what they're saying. To me, that they're saying, "Okay, we're okay with the elementary school", because that's, that's the big discussion, is, "Well, you're splitting off elementary schools." They're really quiet. So to me, that's saying, "Hey, we're okay with what you're doing." Okay, so that's just that area. So I still think this is a natural boundary that I, that I would still push for to go to Deer Creek and Rocky Mountain. So I'm finding the, the kind of the sociology, the human behavior of this very fascinating.
That's what Kim has studied.
That's what I said, yeah. And it's so fascinating to me that after our meeting, who have we been hearing from? All of these people up here, right? This up here, where, where we had people above north of Heritage Parkway, right? Because they're the ones, and, and so to me, I just think we need to go back and fix that Cove area. So, so that solution, that Coyote Road option is, is a solution for me that, that brings that neighborhood back down into the, the TMS, Wasatch area that I feel like they should have, nine years ago, been a part of that. I think nine years ago, it should have been boundaried a little bit differently. So I would like to bring them back down. But again, the south end, that 40 is still a natural, natural bound, boundary for me. So that's, that's where I am. He's great.
People at G. So as I, as I went through and looked at a lot of the different options, so I don't have an elementary age child, so I'll say that first. But when I look at this option, and I, I do hear, we can't take Daniels Canyon and move it into Old Mill with the current boundaries. We could change the Old Mill boundaries. And if we were to look at all the students in G, or D, or H for elementary school, if you were to take all the kids in those boundaries and then split up the elementary kids, the likelihood is, is that you would actually even out the elementary school sizes probably a lot more equally than we are today. Old Mill is the largest school in the district.
By far.
By far. Daniels Canyon is the only school, only elementary school that grew last year. And so we, we're seeing a growth happen down there. And so that's probably an area that's going to have to be looked at anyway for boundary changes. And so for me, one of the things I've been thinking about over the last 48 hours is, do we need to consider the elementary boundaries a little bit more heavily to say, "Maybe, maybe we need to change that because of what we're seeing with growth"? As it stands, if you were to keep a boundary like this, you actually have three elementary schools on the Deer Creek side. If growth happens in Independence or Sawmill, you, that is where we have another site, which means you would have three elementary schools now on that side. So you would have a natural feeder pattern of three elementary, three elementary, one middle school, one high school on both sides.
So you're looking like, okay, if you push up to G, it gives the best option to eventually align elementary schools the way we want? Maybe not right now, but maybe in the future?
Yeah.
And, and G pushes it up to...
The River Rock.
River Rock, yeah.
So my problem with G is just that forecast, the Deer Creek, Wasatch forecast in 2030. Uh huh. That's really my only issue with that.
You like it, but the numbers get too far away?
Yeah, I don't want the numbers to get too far off. I, I also like in the other one, the H, you know, kind of that new growth. We're pushing that new growth over to Deer Creek, so...
People that aren't there yet.
But Sorenson and Independence.
Yeah. Putting, putting them over into the new school. So that was the appeal there for me. And just that, this is, this is just my issue with, with G is that, that gap as we go into the future. Which, you know, is, I know it's a crystal ball still, but it's, we can look out to 2030, so...
One of the challenges I have, and I don't know if MGT, I mean, they're not here to defend what I'm about to say.
Are they watching?
They're watching.
I'm guessing, no.
The, the challenge I have is when they presented the numbers for the 2030 forecast, they weren't aligned with school boundaries. They weren't aligned with, like they said, it was 99 kids per 100 houses for Midway. Anyone who lives in Midway, that, that's not a thing that's happening in 2030. Like, we don't have a bunch of new development. They talked about, we had a new apartment building being built in Midway. We don't have that. So...
So you're talking well into the future and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I don't, I don't know that I put a lot of, of stock today in the 2030 forecasting, you know...
Was the 2030 a projection number, or was it that we have butts in seats?
There was majority of butts in seats, but they are considering the new developments and the growth that was going in there with their best guess based on those reasons.
Just one thing on that, Brad, that might, we got a new, much better and more thorough person assigned to us who has revised, from, from way back when, who has revised lots of those things.
Okay.
So we are, yeah, because I noticed the same thing. They were consistently over projecting. And we feel like we're more in, you know, that she's done a better job beating us where we're standing.
These numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
Have they, so with that in mind, I'm sorry, Kim...
Oh, you're good, no, no.
With that in mind, have they revised projections for the Sorenson areas or, or...
They're, they're, they're...
They're in the process of that now. We just sent them to October 1, and then they go through the process of coming and looking at the maps and coming to town and looking and talking to those developers to see where they're at in the process. So that, that would start happening now.
So there's that question, but what about, does this include, so, so if you look at Center Creek and Mill, is it Mill Road? Mill Road, right? That development that's about to go in?
It's not Mill.
2400?
2400.
2400. I know home prices are up, but I, there's going to be some kids there. If you, if you drive by that area, that, they're, they're moving dirt there. Is that including kind of that whole area that goes up Center Creek?
That development, is I, correct me if I'm wrong, would be in these projections. Because I think they...
Because they're moving dirt.
Because they're moving dirt.
That's what they told us.
Again, these initial projections we're showing were still from, like, we've had these, this was last, done last year. So we have got the newest stuff, but this was last year.
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The 2026 numbers are, are kids we have right now, then you're saying? But the 2030 are projections based on the formula she used with communities moving dirt?
That was, that was a previous formula, not the new person formula, correct? Because these numbers are still the same as they were a couple of months ago.
We've had the new person for a couple of years now.
Oh, so you're this...
For a year and a half.
So was her, was her, were you, were you saying the, what do we call the...
When she did the presentation, just in August, August.
The yield factor?
Yield factor, yeah.
She was saying the yield factor for Midway was one?
It was 90, 99 kids.
A point nine, nine?
For 100, for 100 houses.
I haven't, I haven't seen one that high.
Yeah.
I remember that.
I, I just remember that because I was like, man, that's like really high.
Because I've quoted it to people. Because she said, it's like 28 out of 100 for Coyote, 99 out of 100 for Midway. I remember that.
Yeah, I don't know. So if it's the same person, yeah.
She misspoke, I don't, I don't think we have any yield factors over one anymore. Like one kid per household.
Yeah.
I guess my general point is, we know that there's going to be a lot of growth out in, out in our area, you know, just east of 40, east of Maine.
You're, you're talking down in the Center Creek area, right?
Yeah. We know there's going to be a lot of growth there. I'm just worried about that gap for Wasatch. Wasatch is getting bigger. So that's, that's just my only thing there.
Jake, what's your thoughts?
Well, you kind of said it first. I was too afraid, Brad, to bring up the fact that the elementary schools are going to be addressed. They're going to have to be addressed. Yeah. At some point, so I don't know what we want to necessarily do about that, but I think burying our head in the sand on that is not going to help us down the road. So that's a very real change that's going to come. And then the other point I wanted to make sure that we addressed was all the, all the emails that have come in since we tabled this. And I, I have gotten substantially more communication since we tabled it than we did going into the meeting.
Same.
I know I was a few minutes late, but if that hadn't been addressed, we need to make sure that we're listening to those very lengthy emails that have come in since.
Mostly from the, the JR Smith area, right?
Correct.
Corey, thoughts?
My thoughts are very, probably very similar to Kim's, but if you're asking me a scenario, I like H. I think it, it corrects a boundary that was bad 10 years ago. And I'm not, I'm not being critical of why it was done. I'm sure it was, it was strictly, we've, we've got to, we've got to put bodies in different places. And, and it was probably, I'm sure it was a really hard decision and, and felt right at the time. And, and, but, but I think it, it cleans the boundary up that's, that's been bad for a long time. I, after Adam's dis- discussion on buses, I'm comfortable moving that line to H. And yes, the bus may not stop in front of their house now. They may have to walk down to Heritage Park to get on the bus if they want to go to...
TMS.
TMS.
Or Rocky Mountain.
Or, excuse me, to Rocky Mountain. TMS is going to be somewhere up there because we're going to have a bus. Rocky Mountain, if some of us still, like, that's our school, we, we started there, we want to finish there. There's, there's transportation available to them to get there now, so...
Would you go straight H, or would you look more some new growth areas? Like, if you look at neighborhood from a long time ago, you do have the new ivory homes down on the south side of Coyote when you first come in. What are your thoughts with that neighborhood? Either way?
Yeah, I could, I could go, I, I, I'm not really passionate either one way or the other on that, so...
Okay. Now that you kind of know what everybody's thinking, let's have a good conversation. And I, I think one of the things we have to do first, and I, I will say, I did not hear very many advocates for D, which is the current thing that's out there. It, it, it still looks like we have B, but it looks like most people are looking at pushing up to at least Coyote, if not a little higher. I mean, incorporating that down into what would be the Tempanogus and Wasatch boundary. We could look at different modifications up in there if we wanted to do that. But that's kind of seems where most people are right now to just kind of sum up what we just heard. So let's just, I, I, in, in, we, we do believe, as far as the law's concerned, we spoke to lawyers about where we are with all of this and keeping within the law of a hearing. We do believe we can modify it a little bit, something like that, without having another hearing after we kind of heard where everything goes. If, if we go to B, we are going to have to have another hearing. We'll, we'll go out 30 days, and that's when we push a board, meaning out. If you wanted to go out, we, we could, we could do whatever you wanted there and give people a chance to input with whatever new scenario. We could attempt to try to go up. If you guys did choose D, let's say up to H, we could jump up into that neighborhood and try to get some feedback from the people up in just that area, which, if you remember back, that was the, actually, the very first meeting we ever had was with the group between Heritage. We went up into the Cove. We said, "We want to know what they're thinking." That was the very first meeting we held. It was, it was kind of an invite for that group only. So we, we did go up there once. And if I remember right, all but a few people said, and I don't know, it was just because a lot of them, that they would prefer to go down to Tempanogus and Wasatch, but they, they were where they were. So anyway, that's, that's kind of a summary of, of kind of where we are in the process. But I would say this just opened up to a, a general conversation and see if we can land on a, on a place.
I do have a question. I do have a question for the board, because these options were on the table in our last study session, and you four picked, in the informal poll we did, picked D to be the proposed scenario over G or H. So I, I would like to know what changed, what moved you from D to these new scenarios? Because, because like some of the emails said, you know, we had spent months, months researching, we didn't get a lot of new information in the study session, other than hearing, don't split my elementary school, the people in the Cove don't like being split from their peers, so I'd love to hear why the change for you guys.
Mine was H. My one was H, my two was D.
And mine was two. I think I always said H was my first, but I could live with D.
Corey said to go, but Corey, as he was walking out, said H, but the numbers might be better on D, so that's...
I think it's...
But it made sense to him on H.
I think it's like peeling an onion, layer by layer, new information, new, hearing. I think it's one thing to have all this data, and we did hear, you know, we did that one neighborhood meeting that Garrick's referring to, we did the J.R. Smith meeting. Um, you just kinda have to hear some things repeatedly before it really sinks in, and it synced in for me the other day that, that, and, and just reaching out and getting context and getting the history of why that initial choice was made to begin with, just getting more information and hearing things repeatedly, it just, it just sunk in that this really should have been, for me...
Nine years ago?
The initial, well, even before we put D out, that, um, this should have been what we put out to begin with.
So, I have just a general question, not an answer to yours, but I, one of the things for me has been the demographics data, is I've been trying to look pretty heavily at that. The only demographic data that I believe is not self-reported is gender, I think, maybe it is, but the other, the other data, I was under the impression, I didn't know this was a thing, that you couldn't register on an annual basis, but apparently it's a thing, that there's quite a few people who don't register, who don't actually, yeah, who don't register every year for school. And if they don't register, do we not have demographic data for those people? Because do we carry it from the prior year? Or do we just not have the data?
No, that's a good question. It does carry from the previous year, when they do that. For example, so looking at this, you may find SIS, which is why we use the GIS system instead.
Yeah.
Those kids are still in our system, you can see all their information, at least the last time the parents updated it.
Yeah.
ELL student, if they came and took the test and they were doing it, we actually enter that information, the parents don't.
Got it.
Based off their scores.
Based off their scores.
Okay.
The, the diversity, one would be what they claimed their race was coming into, to register first, that would carry over.
The very first time.
The very first time that carries over.
Okay.
Freedom News Lunch is based on, annually, we put that information in, but again, to your point, are they putting the application in or not?
Yeah.
So that's, that's kinda how that works. And so that information is, is largely the same, but if a kid chose to DCE in, in kindergarten, and they're now in high school, it will show in some of the reports, their choice in the, their twelfth grader choice in the DC, which we know is not the case, if they haven't gone back in to register.
So coming up from out...
But for the rest of it, we have that information.
We never, we registered once, it was the first time we ever went to school, and then we registered again. It just carried over, so I know that carries through the system statement.
I got that question from constituent yesterday, so I asked Eric, and he said, yes, the October one counts they're using did include, even if the others, like thirty percent that didn't register is what this constituent told me, but he said that's, these numbers still include that thirty percent.
So back to your question, it's processing. You know, it's just, it, some people can process immediately. I, I need that time to process each piece of information that comes in, and it's just processing. It's going back to processing and processing what I know from the time that we put the D out to what I know now. Um, that's all I can say about your question, is just the time that it's taken to process everything.
And I wanted, if H doesn't affect D much, um, was it Tesla?
Tesla.
Tesla. Uh, that comment just keeps bouncing around in my head. She's like, I was really hoping this is when you would fix the mistake from the past. And it's like, I had no idea there was a mistake, but it's not my area, I don't know, I don't have any school-age kids in there, all that stuff. But when someone comes and says there was a mistake, when I'm looking at maps, I don't have that emotional connection to it, and then that just keeps bouncing around in my head, that she's like, that was broken before, here's a chance to fix it, and it doesn't disrupt D, then let's fix it with H.
And, and to what Corey said, at the time, right, like us, they were doing the best that they could with what they had.
Absolutely, yeah.
But now in hindsight, we're looking at it going, ugh, yeah, they probably should have.
And it was probably perfect back then, but now the opportunity is there.
There was probably a lot more kids at the time in that area that were being schoolkids. I mean, that, I'm sure that just dwindled over time.
Different data center.
Yeah.
But it was interesting talking to the board member and the parent, and just getting their perspective on, on what happened at the time, and I do definitely think that it's something we need to go back and adjust and fix that, yeah.
So I think that's what we're all trying, I mean, and we don't have a crystal ball to see the growth in the numbers, it could, hindsight is 2020, so ten years from now, I get, it might be like, whoa, we had a growth in an area we're expecting, and we are trying to do our best with the data now. Where I'm at, I think that's why I fought so hard for B, is because I don't want to say we made a mistake in the future, and, and this is, this is, and for my area, this is why, you know, you talked about, Kim, because of the numbers, we split the Cove off, and it, we realize it was a mistake now, and I, I don't wanna make a mistake today that five years from now we're saying, ah, coulda, woulda, shoulda. And I know we're not hearing from Sawmill, and so we're assuming that they're okay, but that's twenty-five percent of Daniels Canyon split. So seventy-five percent is saying, we're not okay with our elementary being split right now. And I, I know you talked about a natural boundary, but in, in my mind, if we're, if we're trying to think of a logical, natural boundary for ten to fifteen years to come, B or C, which align, which honor feeder patterns and align with the current elementary boundaries, to me is a logical, natural boundary for years to come. You're using Highway 189, Provo Canyon Road, for those who don't know the names, so you have a huge highway, Provo Canyon Road, which comes to the one-stop, heads north on Highway forty, which is the natural boundary you've all, all said you like. And then, instead of going up Heritage Parkway, it goes up Center Street, and I, and I've proposed, let's modify it to go clear to the mountain, so I know there was concerns about sending Timber Lakes across the highway, because it's of proximity to Deer Creek, but I think if you take Center Street, what does it become, Lake Creek Parkway or something? Clear to the mountain, you can send Timber Lakes to Wasatch.
But it's not just Timber Lakes.
No, but, but I'd also like to look at the amount of kids, because you're, you're sending all of Wheeler Park, who's Heber Meadows, Crazy Acres, Stormhaven, who are saying, we're proximate, and now you're saying, hey, Greener Hills, that, Greener Hills, um...
Big Pole.
Big Pole, but they're riding a bus regardless, and so how many kids there versus the kids in Heber Meadows, Wheeler Park? I'd like to see the impact on the amount of kids. Um, also, I think it's, we need to note, we're not hearing from those going to Wasatch, because that's where they wanna go. We, I realize we're only hearing from a small amount, but that's the amount that's impacted, and that is why we're hearing from that group, is they're the ones who are changing. And to Garrick's point about, superintendent's point about the growth potential, I think the growth potential fits with B or C. That still splits all of those homes on the north end of town that just got approved, all of the building on the east side. Those two scenarios that honor feeder patterns also honor potential growth patterns. Brad and Jake, I am fully in favor of redoing elementary boundaries if, if B or C doesn't pass, because I think balancing the elementaries is a good thing. But if we went with B or C, it sounds like we may not be able to redo elementary boundaries for a while. B or C is a timely option to honor feeder patterns right now. And I, I guess if, for you guys, I've kind of heard, well, we can't do elementary boundaries right now, and I'm, I'm kinda hearing maybe feeder patterns isn't the priority today, but it'll be addressed eventually. So if it's not the priority today, that's why I'm saying, pick B for the natural boundary, for the growth potential. I think for safety, and I know I've spoken to that, and I realize it was addressed in the meeting, but it also, for me, it comes down to, are you prioritizing, because when I've heard you guys talk about D and now H, what I've heard is J.R. Smith is more proximate to temp. And, and I've heard you guys say, it seems silly to, to, to take them all the way to Rocky. Yes, that's, I get that if you're prioritizing the middle schoolers. But as I drove here in the dark this morning, I was thinking about those high school drivers. And for Daniels Canyon, who's, who's Heber Meadows, Wheeler Park, it is farther for them to get to Deer Creek. So are you prioritizing middle schoolers proximity, who are going to ride a bus for the most part? Or are you prioritizing high schoolers proximity, who, most of them drive? And for me, with, with option B, it's, if, if we talk about, we've talked a lot about school choice, if we boundary J.R. Smith to Deer Creek, they can school choice, and they're still riding their bikes, like you guys have told me they do already, to Timpanogus or to Wasatch High School safely. I know that there's seventy-five families from that survey in the Daniels Canyon boundaries who said, we're going to Wasatch no matter what. So that means I'm telling seventy-five families, you're gonna school choice, transportation is not provided for school choice unless maybe there's an option for a courtesy bus. Somebody was telling me there's a courtesy bus there right now, because we crossed the highway, I'm, I'm not sure, but then how are those seventy-five families getting safely to school? Because that area does have to cross a highway to, to school choice where they need to go. Um, uh, and, and Corey, just where you said it corrects the boundaries from years ago, and a correction is needed, because it, you know, split the neighborhood. I, I worry, as we talk about this, I, I don't wanna make a, a same mistake, and to me, that's where B makes the most sense, is the natural boundary, the safety, the growth potential aligns with elementary boundaries. I just think it checks all the boxes on that rubric someone asked us to use to defend our choice. So that's where I'm at, I'd love for you to speak to it.
Can you go to the map?
The, the one we saw earlier?
The, with all the, the red and yellow dots? And, and scroll, can you scroll up, all the way down to this, or south? And then, and then go back up, please, to, to the Cove area?
Oh, okay. So the Cove would be this area?
My thoughts are kind of raw right now, but what I was, it's the neighborhoods that are, that are talking to us. So that forty, to me, is that natural boundary, we're keeping Wheeler Park together, so that, the neighborhood. Sawmill is really kind of their own neighborhood with, with those kids, and they're, you know, branching out into all those, they're very close to all those new homes, that's, that's their neighborhood grouping. The Cove, sorry, my thoughts are really raw here, but I'm just kind of thinking, the logic in this is like, i- it's those neighborhoods that are, the proximate neighborhoods that are talking to us right now.
So not, not so much school boundaries, but neighborhoods?
Right, and it's, and so what happened was that Cove area, is that...
This is where Cove Park is, right here?
Yeah, so that Cove area right here, so I guess, in regards to the future, so back then, you know, they were, they were really loud, they're like, why are you breaking us off from the rest of, of our neighborhood, which is, you know, there's a lot of homes down here, they're just kind of not really broken off. My thoughts are really raw, it's very rough right now. It's too early.
I think we get neighborhood, what you're saying is neighborhood you're prioritizing.
And, and go up, down, go down to Sawmill, please. And I just think they're...
In the light blue, they're in the light blue.
Right here, yeah. I don't know, I just see a, a clear definition of neighborhoods here. I understand Wheeler Park is, you know, the break off, when, when we say we're splitting a middle school, we're, we're splitting Sawmill off from Wheeler Park is what we're doing. But we're just not, I just don't see this as the same situation as that if you're looking down the road. So if you're talking about, we don't wanna make the same mistake down the road, like, like we did with the Cove, I'm just seeing it a little differently, because to me, still, this is that natural boundary, and I'm seeing, and, and as all of this grows, I'm seeing them branching out with their, you know, relationships and friends this way, and eventually, we may look at that school, elementary school boundary. So I know they're concerned about breaking off of them, but we just haven't heard from them. Back then, the Cove was really loud about breaking off from their neighborhood.
But we are hearing from all those little dots down Heber Meadows.
Right here.
Like, they're, they're in the same thing. They don't have an equal out, like, they're, they are, the reality is, they are further away, all, the people up on the, um, southern of Little Sweden, um, that hits into the highway, I mean, all of those people, I would say, are comparable to the Cove.
To the Cove.
Yeah, and I am hearing from them, they're saying, why am I going to a high school that's farther away? What, and, and why are you splitting my middle schooler from her friends? So I, I think that's a similar concern, and as I look at that map, Highway 189 encompassing that area is also a natural boundary, it's not just about Sawmill, which is twenty-five percent of my area, I'm talking about the other seventy-five percent who I am hearing from.
So really, Brian, let me ask you a question, so would you say, if, if we go with like H, to consider sending this neighborhood right here, still got, like, put them with these guys, because they head straight down Mill?
How would they feel about breaking off from Wheeler Park?
How would they feel about breaking off from here?
I think we've heard people don't wanna be split, so you're gonna be, you're gonna upset people that want feeder patterns that way.
I'm saying if we went to H, or, or stayed with D, what, what do you feel this neighborhood that's running straight down Mill?
Mm-huh.
Because that's how they get.
Yeah.
They're running straight down Mill. What do you think they would feel, breaking off from these guys?
I, I haven't had that conversation with them, though, the only thing I've heard from people is, I don't, I don't know, honestly. Well, I...
Because they are, they are separate.
I, I heard from the one family, she came and spoke about splitting her daughter from elementary friends, but I don't know if those are middle school friends that lives in that area. She was saying, don't split her, but I don't know if the friends are in the neighborhood, or she's currently at the middle school, if it's the other Timpanogus boundaries, but, um, I haven't asked that question of, of Heber Meadows. I think you still have concerns with feeder patterns, but that does make them more proximate.
I still go back to that natural boundary, Highway forty, natural boundary, and... I mean, how much?
It's not touch. I mean, it is a touchscreen, but it's not gonna control.
No, that's not what I was doing.
I think, I think what Brian's saying about those, I think that, that the challenge with this neighborhood...
Thanks, Brian.
Wait, it is touch.
Is, they're, they're, I mean, Daniels Canyon, where's Daniels Canyon?
It's, it's kind of like the, yeah.
Is that a road?
No, that's Daniel's Road, Daniels Canyon, it's right down the road.
So there's no road that punches straight through there?
No, Daniel won't allow it.
Yeah, they, they, they gotta, they've gotta come out, or they're coming down here and there is no road that punches over here, they're, they are isolated out in here, so that's, that's, that's where the, the question is.
Can we take a five-minute bathroom break?
Yep.
Okay, let's take a five-minute bathroom break.
Does anybody have any ibuprofen? I didn't bring my arm.
Yep.
Like this even more so.
We have more lines and communities to consider like you know for this one midway you didn't affect Old Mill but when you do elementary.
This took us about six months to work us to today, a little over six months and so it probably a bit more involved if we undertake that because you would be going. I mean to the different communities a little bit more would be my guess, but yeah, no deadlines in any of that stuff.
I think we're at a point where we need to maybe figure out what we want to do and move forward. So where is everybody at? I'm still where I was with H.
H? Maybe a zoomed in view of H, just the where those north border is would be if it's open for discussion.
If you do, if you do decide H, we would recommend it. There's a, there's Ivory Home subdivision right as you turn on to Coyote, it's off to your right.
Do you want to show us that?
So if you put up the road then it would.
Up to your left.
No, onto your right.
As you drive in it's up to you. With the like the row house, the row houses or the one on the left that's the.
Sort of, it's sort of both.
Houses that are really close.
It's definitely on the right, it's sort of behind those.
The apartment.
It's down off, down off the hill from.
Where the I center is.
Oh yeah.
But behind them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so something along those lines.
So if you do choose that then that's probably part of the source and subdivision, we just move that up.
The new or. Put them with the new.
Correct, and I think that would maybe balance the numbers a tiny bit more.
There's also some future spurs that come off south of that.
Will you pull up H Eric?
Yeah, so I'll pull that up too.
To see the numbers?
He's gonna show us this area.
So you're saying H Cory, you said H?
Yeah, H is Coyote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jake is saying H with some.
Also Brad while you're up there, those spurs that kind of come down up, up further up, no to your.
Never mind, someone stole me.
I didn't touch it.
Someone stole me.
Didn't touch it.
On the sort of on the west side of that road clear.
Are you talking about Jason up there?
Yeah, those spurs that come out would also want to be up within that boundary so that we just, if you chose this, we'd just draw that boundary to basically take all the new stuff up north, the older cove and things down as well.
The new with the new. Will you, will you, will you finger, yeah, just a finger.
Go up there and finger that.
So basically new with the new.
Jay, if I'm understanding correctly, the founder would actually move the Ivory Homes to Rocky Mountain, will be north.
Keep them at Rocky.
It would come to.
It's almost the canal or whatever that is.
No, not, not.
There's a, that's, that's down off the hill.
There's the canal there.
There's a canal there, so it's probably a canal up there.
But not on the road, you have, those spurs also have to, would go.
Would go to.
So you're going up Coyote Springs Parkway and then, and then where Eric, will you just do?
No, actually.
Oh.
Jason's having King Purple Low.
What I, what I would say, yeah, is like.
Yeah, Jason.
You come here, then you come here, then just back behind there.
Yeah.
And then, and then you hit this. So all this new stuff would also go with it.
That's my vote.
If you go down the road then just split.
Good. Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't need to get up and draw, yeah, exactly that. All that stuff lower, lower than.
That's established.
All the stuff lower from Calaway Drive, this, all that new stuff, Mike said, take the road out up there and swing around these like you said.
Can you zoom out a little bit? So just, everybody just try to think ten years down the road.
Too much?
This is where all the new building is going on.
I, I see it.
No, thanks.
Can you put up the um, numbers for H? Would this modify those numbers by much that what Jake's talking about? Or what Jason's talking about?
There is currently, again, we had the middle school, it was maybe eight kids that were in that Ivory Homes that had moved farther south because H originally had Ivory Homes cut out of that. Currently there's not tons of kids in that Ivory, Ivory development.
Brad, you haven't said, what, what about, do you, where are you?
Probably, probably a modified H. I still think we have to look at the elementary boundaries.
Tomorrow.
It's Halloween.
It's good.
Right after our.
Or literally.
I could go to B, I could do it, but.
And, and why?
Um, on Y for B, I think, so one of the hard things with B for me is middle school, Timpanogus is the larger school. And we actually would be reducing the population quite dramatically Rocky Mountain. That's the struggle for me with B is that the middle school numbers don't actually balance. We would be swinging a huge chunk of kids at the middle school level and I think that would be really hard.
How many are at each school right now Eric for TMS and Rocky?
Just under seven hundred at RMS, eleven hundred at, or just over, it's almost eleven hundred, right, at TMS?
And Rocky is seven, you said?
Yeah, six, six something.
So I do have a question on that. Can you look, because I got an email about that from a teacher at Rocky.
Six seventy-four, ten thirty-three.
Who was concerned about, uh, I guess what is the capacity and, and Steph, you worked there because he, he talked about at one point it was so big, it, it, he felt like it was detrimental to kids. I, I guess where is that, where is that number? That's the middle school, that doesn't need to be considered.
I mean, at that point, I think we were about eleven hundred.
So eleven hundred is.
We were a little over eleven, probably closer to twelve, I should maybe. Um, and it was, that was pre-Timpanogus.
One of the things I did yesterday with Lana, uh, right, the principal of Rocky Mountain, we just walked to school and looked at teaching stations and stuff like that again, which we've done, but I wanted to do it one last time. Um, there's forty. Um, so you're running in, if you look at preps, um, you run a class average size of about twenty-five kids if you had, you know, nine hundred kids on the campus. So that's fairly comfortable to me. Um, my guess is back in the day when you started pushing up around, uh, a thousand, eleven hundred, it gets tight and I think that's probably where Brad is when you push up into the ninety or so. It could get a little bit tight. Um, that's where you do, I mean, that's what we're doing at the high school right now where you put teachers on carts to make sure that the, the, the prep period classrooms that are empty are actually being utilized so you don't have any, uh, but I don't, based off of our walk yesterday.
And how much room was it?
As long as you stay around that, that area where we are right now, um, I think you would, again, from my estimation, it's sitting around twenty-five kids per class.
And, and was that with the seven hundred or nine hundred?
Nine.
Nine hundred, we twenty-five kids per class.
Actually forty teaching stations though.
Yeah, I, I was figuring in preps and stuff like that, so.
So this allows for room at both middle schools and then would you mind, yeah, mind going to B Eric? And then B, A and E has the potential, well, you're twenty kids over, but then you're under in thirty with our projections.
And that, that line, that southern JR Smith line is Center Street?
That's correct.
That does not make sense to me. That proximity is what does not sound me on B. Those, those homes on Center Street going over to Rocky Mountain Middle School versus Timpanogus Middle School.
And that, that's where it comes down to, are you prioritizing middle school kids who ride a bus or high school kids in the southern end of town who are driving themselves for proximity because they are further away?
I'm looking, yeah, I, it's still, I'm.
For me proximity, someone on Center Street said they're a mile from both high schools. Proximity in this valley is a wash. The high schools are two miles apart. For me it's safety. And middle school kids who ride a bus is not as big of a safety concern for me as high schoolers who drive themselves. Where I'm at, I'm hearing us talking about in Coyote, we're, we're making a decision on new versus old. There's not going to be a new versus old in ten years. So if we don't want to make a mistake ten years from now, I think it does need to be, um, what we've heard, don't split the neighborhoods, a natural boundary, um.
So you'd say if you choose that to keep in Coyote, don't, don't involve Ivory South.
If you do it, you do G because G takes you to River Road, which is a natural boundary. That's what I, that's what I would do if I were doing that.
And, and I realize you said, you know, you're looking at the middle school numbers more than high school, but that, that nine percent free and reduced lunch is the number right now. That's what we're starting school with next year. And, and so that's the number next year. And if ten percent is the percent we don't want to go over, plus you're gonna have a lot of school choice that this scenario, what was it, GH, whatever it is? It's not accounting for all the people who are gonna school choice. So that number's gonna become larger. I think you're gonna have a problem with your numbers at that point. And that's where, um, that's where, I guess my biggest, the biggest thing I've heard, the thing we've promised the community, the thing most important to me. Because it's my kids that are going one way or the other. I am not willing to compromise on equity, on, on equitable access to programs and in trying to make sure we have balanced schools. So there's program access for all kids. And, and by that, um, I think H does not allow for school choice. There's not enough room in the numbers between Deer Creek and high school to allow for school choice. And then I think you could have the potential of, we have a lot more kids at one school and it might be hard to keep the same programs at the other school or, I just, I don't feel like H allows.
How does it not allow for school choice?
So can you go back to H Eric? So like the options we've looked at B and D both have a three hundred kid cushion, starting Deer Creek, three hundred kids more, right? To allow for school choice, to cushion the school choice. Right, but H, you have basically a seventy-five kid cushion and I already know from the survey, Midways has twenty-five families saying I'm school choicing no matter what. My area has seventy-five. I can't remember the other areas. But just my area alone, you're flipping school choice whereas B or D give more wiggle room.
But I think the board's always been intent on letting all of them school choice, so I mean.
Right, but then it becomes unbalanced.
Even if it's a lot different initially.
Right.
Initially.
I mean, the school choice in the beginning is going to be, I, I expect the next two years, Wasatch High School is going to be big and have lots of kids. And from an equity standpoint, for kids, for having different programs, we have to make it a commitment for the board and to work with the high, to work with administration to say, we still want, even though we know Wasatch is gonna be the bigger school, we still want the programs available. Even though we know in the beginning they're not going to have, you know, ten kids who want to take this class because, you know, they're juniors and seniors and they want to gra- graduate from Wasatch High School.
I think the commitment we've heard from the board and we are committed, like, we gotta be as creative as we need to be, to be, or do what we need to be. And if we absolutely cannot do it for a program, we better have a darn good reason why. But we're committed to making sure that people have access to programs.
I think you said that in our meeting the other night, that you would, I, I can't remember the quote you said, but basically you would.
Yeah.
Die on the sword for this, you're gonna, you're gonna make sure we have.
I think the two pillars from the, from the get-go that I've heard from the board going back, like, I remember the two initial, like, there were two meetings, oh, it was, it was way back, like, the very beginning of this. That it came out, uh, access to programs and choice, there was gonna be two pillars we were gonna build off of and that's, I think we're staying committed to those two pillars. So that becomes our job, doesn't, if, it's a two thousand six hundreds, two thousand one school and six hundred at the other. It's our job to make it work and that's what we'll do, the staff is make it work.
Oh, I, I get that. I'm just saying H doesn't have as much wiggle room. It flips Wasatch High to bigger.
Okay.
And that means, let's say you have five hundred kids difference. Well, that's five hundred more parents at one high school to contribute for boosters to, I mean, there, there is the potential there. I'm, I'm just pointing out that H has the potential to be more imbal- imbalanced than B or D because B or D has a three hundred kid difference.
Initially.
Between Deer Creek and Wasatch initially. And then they both equal, equal out, just like this one eventually equals out. I'm just saying originally, this one has seventy-five kid difference as opposed to the three hundred scenarios B and D do to accommodate school choice initially.
I, I'm still on this because I'm just really looking at what the potential growth on that east side and, and just that natural boundary. So I'm still.
But, but H is Coyote, right?
H, yeah. Okay, where's everybody at? Has anybody changed?
Brianna, kind of, so for me, probably the biggest thing that stood out to me is when we put out D, it's not even who we heard from, it's a little bit what came to us, who we didn't. And we didn't hear from Sawmill, Center Creek area. And we also, on the other side, we really didn't hear from the southern part of, uh, the JR Smith area. Um, they did. They're, they're good. The, the part that, that we have boundary to, in other words, that's where me, I'm not hearing the continuity of boundary because of the two, there's two big areas there that we just didn't hear from. That when we went out to those initial, uh, things, and I remember sitting in the rooms and talking to the people and like, uh, and asking them, where was their priority and they said proximity. And so that's really, those, to me, it's who we didn't hear from in a couple of those initial parent meetings that are weighing most on my brain. So I would probably be with the, the majority of the board here with my own thinking as well.
And I get that, but that's because they're not impacted. They're going where they want, right? We're hearing from the people who are impacted, which makes sense.
Well, they are impacted because they don't get to go to school with their feeder pattern kids anymore.
But the thing that I found interesting.
Well, and, and the southern part, it's not just Sawmill. We're not hearing from Heritage Parkway down.
For feeder patterns, you're saying?
We didn't hear it, we heard it from Heritage Parkway up. We did not hear it from Heritage Parkway down. So that's where, the, those, and, and then those initial, probably, I think it was initial two meetings, we heard that same thing. And so that's probably the biggest way around my mind.
And the interesting thing about Sawmill is we haven't, we didn't hear from them when we put the proposal out and we haven't heard from them after we tabled it.
We, we heard in the boundary, when we met with just them, they, we did hear from them and they just said.
Right, but.
We're going where.
Aside from that meeting. But it's interesting how who we're hearing from has shifted depending on what, what we put out there and what we tabled and that's what I find very interesting, kind of the shift in where we're. People that we're hearing from. Where's everybody at? Has anyone changed?
I haven't changed.
I just get more impressed with Brianna every time she talks, but I haven't changed.
Guys are nice. No, um, I think it's been a good discussion and I hope the community knows, we really have tried to consider it from every lens and every perspective and, and we did listen. I mean, you guys are missing work this morning, like, my husband is working from homes to get my kids off, like, you delayed a trip. This, the district came in early, like, everybody has sacrificed to try to listen and I appreciate that from everybody. So, um, thank you for, for being willing to make sure we're making the best decision. So.
Thank you, everybody, for defending what you believe in and, I mean, each of us, everybody, um.
So what I'm hearing, can I kind of sum up a little bit? I'm still hearing probably more of an inclination to H. I think we need to look at that Ivory area down south, that's something there as well, but, um, that, that's probably what's gonna come back in. And we'll check with Joan to make sure we're in good shape when it comes to making sure that we've kept the law on all of this. We don't have to go out to another hearing for thirty days. But what I'm hearing here is that the majority is wanting to bump up more of an H option, um, maybe with a little tweaks in that. And then, uh, what we would then need is a chance to come back and actually vote on this in a board meeting.
So we have to, it has to be in a board meeting to vote on it.
And would that be a special one or the November one is special?
We, we would propose as staff that the faster we have the boundary, the faster we can go to work on making it work.
So if the little tweak between our version of H and D fits legally, we could hold a board meeting.
And to, we just have to.
We have one in a couple of weeks, right?
But we could do it.
Quick, next week.
It's two weeks. What's the date of the next board meeting?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, November eighteenth before Thanksgiving.
All right, how.
You could just do it one item.
I'd say we do it before that personally. Okay, when's everybody gonna be in town?
That would be right.
Okay, what are we looking at again?
Uh, time to do a special board meeting to vote on boundaries.
I kind of wanted to talk about G with Brad a little bit.
Okay.
I'm just still looking at that future gap because I don't, you know, at one point I didn't, I thought, yeah, that river road boundary is a good boundary, but now I'm, I'm just looking at all that new possible growth there and it just, to me, makes sense to put him over to the new. Like at one point I, I, I was with you on this.
I, I think the thing for me is, um, no matter how we divide it, there is a lot, there is a lot of growth and that is where probably the majority of the growth is going to be, um.
Can I, can I ask you on that, Brad? When you talk about growth, are you talking about those new places on River Road that were developed? Because didn't the demographer say there's not a, like, there's houses being built, but there's not a lot of kids coming from this area?
The Sawmill area, it's, yes, there's sores and properties up here.
Okay, other areas, not the Coyote.
Yeah, it's, it's not just that area. There's, I mean, there are eight thousand homes that are slated for that area potentially. But then there's a lot down here, there's independent, independents like.
Over in there somewhere.
Over in here somewhere, wherever that is.
And even back, the Center Creek Canyon area.
Yeah.
That's independent, right?
Farther back.
If I were to draw a blank slate, not that I should suggest this, if I were to draw a blank slate because Brianna, you did mention this at one point, trying to avoid the east versus west. Go like that. Take Waltsburg, Daniels Canyon, this area here, and, and maybe all Old Mill are part of Old Mill and you end up with the north-south.
So what, so is that like a highway one eighty-nine through the rest of the valley?
Well, now you just blew my mind in a whole different direction.
Because, because.
Yeah.
But, but.
Highway nine ends up being the boundary line.
Brad?
I mean, from a, from a numbers perspective, I would, I would guess that this would actually be pretty balanced and then you have a growth area on the south in one school and a growth area on the north in the other one.
And that would pretty much keep JR intact, Daniels intact. Would, would it split like Hebrew Valley and Old Mill?
Hebrew Valley would end up being split. Old Mill may have to be changed a little bit, but.
It's wild.
That's if we wanted to drop an entire balm.
Yeah. Okay.
But is it, but is it better? I mean, you said no stone unturned. I don't know the numbers.
I don't think we need to disrupt, to disrupt that many people.
Just the, even just the proximity that I'm, yeah, I can't. I, I love that you're an out of the box thinker. I do, I really do. Because this is, this is to the comment of.
Brianna and I are thinking together on this thing. We're like.
I'm still back, I'm back on H.
But it's a concern we've heard, a concern about east-west, we have heard that.
But you know what? It does. It goes back to the comment of leaving no stone left unturned and, and it's okay. But hearing that still, hearing that makes me defend H a little more. But I love that thinking. It's good.
So H, H, I'm trying, what is H? Sorry, I'm trying to keep him straight. Push to Coyote and you're saying H does allow for growth potential, right?
It does.
Let's go back to when we're available for a meeting.
And we love Kim for keeping us on task.
I mean, can we run those numbers?
Well, I got it.
Is that Brad's proposal, is anyone on board with that as a board? I'd be on board with seeing those numbers.
I'm not.
No.
Two, two. It's down to you Jake.
What do you mean?
They're splitting your area.
Yeah.
Wait, what number? Brad, Brad just put on the board?
They're splitting your area.
I am all for seeing those numbers after we've made the decision. See if we made a bad choice, not before, no. I, I don't think we need.
Just remember, in ten years, when Tesla comes to the meeting and says, who made that decision?
No, no, no. Tesla's gonna come to the next meeting and say, good job. And by the time she's graduated, it won't matter.
No, no, it won't, it'll be the Tesla replacement in ten years.
And I understand that, but disrupting that many people right now, I don't think is necessary.
Are we looking like for next week?
Next week would be better for me.
I think it leaves no stone unturned. I'm, I'm for it.
And to be fair, it's actually disrupting less people.
Right, it, it is. I, I realize, I realize that might, it might affect your area in your area, but that's, that's what we've been experiencing. I think it might be less impactful.
I don't have a desire to explore it. Cory doesn't.
I know. It's a hard path to drive, to create a natural boundary between those neighborhoods, in my opinion, when you take a straight angled shot like that. And so we go, in my opinion, into whether or not it's feeder patterns or stuff, it's neighborhoods.
You don't have to make it hard. You can, you could do that line and then do the Old Mill line right now and see what that looks like. I mean, you already, you already kind of have that.
The Old Mill line is Center Street to Lake Creek.
That's essentially B. This is B right now, okay?
Yeah, but if we split.
This is B. The only difference you're doing is you're adding Waltsburg, which has been this.
Island.
Very good word. Not what I was thinking. An island out there. You're just taking, all that's doing is taking Waltsburg and putting that into Daniels Canyon. That's the only difference.
But the line's now going through, or you mean then, then scenario B, that's the only difference.
So that what, what is.
Yeah, go to B for a second please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't want to forget the number.
I'm also keeping an eye on time too, you guys.
Plus that.
And we have had a massive amount of feedback coming back from the people along that boundary that don't want that, they want D. So we're gonna, I, I get turnover another stone, but we might.
Feedback from JR Smith, feedback saying do it from Willer Park, you're, I mean, you're.
We're gonna end up being in the same scenario again, just from a different side.
No, I get that. I, I just, you're saying we made a mistake on this northern boundary ten years ago. I don't want to make a mistake on the southern boundary and that's what my concern is. And I feel like personally, I can defend B. So I guess if, if you guys are for H, I'm not for H, but you, you know, we, we gotta ask for a rubric. Can you defend it? And, and, because I think we, we will need to, that's, that's fair to be able to defend it to the community.
I feel like I can. I mean, it's, it's, I do. I feel like I can get, I can sleep, sleep at night with that decision and defend it.
All right, so I'll, so you can defend it today, but Tesla came and said, who made that decision? And you just admitted this morning, you were on the committee to help make that decision, right? Like, she wants to know who made that bad decision back then and that's, the challenge is, is that, I think what Brianna's trying to say is, I get it, we have deadlines, we have things we're trying to hit and everything else, but at the same token, we don't. It's, it's trying to find that natural boundary. And I do understand what, what Brianna is saying about H is, you are literally dividing a neighborhood, old and new, but in ten years it's not old and new. It's the same thing that happened back then, ten years ago. The Cove area was a newer area. It was, you know, some of those homes were newer. And, and now, and now it's divided, you know, so, um.
The Valley Hills ones weren't.
Or, yeah. Cove was, so.
I don't think it's a hard data point to base a decision on.
Anybody want to move in a different direction?
No.
No.
I'm all for exploring that option and I'm, I'm still behind B for all the reasons I said earlier.
I'm still for H and open if we need to explore it, if we need to explore those numbers.
And can you guys tell me your reasons? Because that's, after we left the meeting last time, my area was like, why D? And I was like, legitimately, I don't know why it's better than B. So I, so I do want to hear the why, please, so that I can explain it to my area. Because I, 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 what, because they're like, do you know why they supported that? So I, I didn't ask that question last time and I called you all. So could you give me your reasons, please, to help me explain it?
Why, why what? D?
Why, well, you're saying H, right? So why H?
I, I've already said, I think it, I think it corrects a bad boundary that's been there for years and it, it, it's, it's just a better boundary up there.
Even though you're cutting through a neighborhood and might have that potential ten years from now to have that bad boundary again.
But that Coyote road is a very natural, right? You're up in that area, it's very natural.
I understand your question, Brianna, you're more asking about, your, your constituents will be more about why the southern boundary, not necessarily why the northern boundary.
Yeah, they're not gonna ask about the northern boundary.
Well, they're just like, why that scenario over, like, when I, when I look at it, I'm like, okay, we're not allowing for school choice. We are cutting a neighborhood, like, I, I, I don't see, I don't know the reasons why in general.
I'll summarize based off just what I heard this morning so we don't have to go back around unless you want to, but I think.
I think that southern, southern area to Tempanogus is an overriding thing that I've heard.
Is what?
These three, an overriding thing that I've heard from these three that initially went to D was that southern part down by Tempanogus.
And our emails and comments and even the people that came to support that at the meet, yeah. Exactly, so, um, from my answer to that question, to go even deeper into it, I, I doubt very seriously that they, ten years ago, or whenever it was, made a conscious mistake. They did the best they could with the information they had.
Sure.
Trying to do the very same thing here. How do we do the best job possible with disrupting the least amount of people possible in the environment we're in right now? That line that we were picking, that we zoomed in on the Google map, right now those neighborhoods don't connect. I don't know if they will in the future, I can't predict that, but there's a canal there, they end in cul-de-sacs right now. When roads connect, that's how you link neighborhoods. Right now, there isn't a way for those new homes to connect to the neighborhood south of them. And that's why I feel the numbers, as many natural boundaries as we can, uh, and based on the scenario we're in right now, with new neighborhoods being established, it's creating a natural boundary for the north end, simply because those neighborhoods don't connect.
And are you?
And so we're disrupting the least amount of people possible.
Are you concerned about, and I know you said the high school numbers, but that is a high school number and you said ten percent would be concerning. When Was, when all those people from Deer Creek School Choice to Wasatch, are you concerned about that free and reduced number being disparate?
Not with the information that I've, I've learned, um, and that what those numbers actually mean. I am more along the lines of the middle school. It, I feel like it does add, make a bigger impact at a middle school level than it does a high school. Uh, and I, I don't think those numbers are going to uh, go exactly the way, if that number's predicted off of the year, uh, twenty thirty, um.
No, it's predicted next year, that's what we will start with.
It's predicted off of actually twenty-five days till last year's.
Right, that's where the school choice though.
Right, and we talked about that.
Which is the number one priority and we don't, the boundary won't do.
The reason I've been looking at the middle school, the middle school one would probably be the twenty thirty representation. That's, that's, that's why I've gone down to the middle school.
So not, you're not concerned about that gap for the kids for the next two years?
No, it's still school choice. That's the number one priority and that's the thing that we can't predict. So it will throw that number off no matter what, cause that's still a prediction based on boundaries, not on what school choice is.
And you feel like this is more of a natural boundary than B?
I feel like it is a more effective boundary split than B and disrupts the least amount of people while still gets us the, the best case scenario, yes, H does.
So for me, natural boundary, neighborhoods, proximity. Cause what, that's what we're hearing, keep our neighborhoods together, which, which we're doing. The little micro neighborhoods, proximity, for example, those neighborhoods just north of Center Street, they're proximity to T M S.
I wanna make sure I throw in too Brianna, that that's.
And future numbers too.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, no.
It's, it's not a perfect answer, I'm not trying to say that the one's right over the other one. It's simply the one that does the least amount of damage maybe is the way to put it. Because I wish there was a way to, really feel more comfortable with some of the safety things and stuff, but we're, we're moving one side to the exact same problem for somebody else. And so it's, I just wanted to be clear that I hear everything that the, you're representing and that the, your community has been saying, and that you're advocating for, and I really, really respect it. And I'm not saying one's right and one's wrong, it's just my opinion that this one is least damaging.
Okay, I'm just watching time.
Brad still, I can hear his brain right now, he is drawing a boundary at an angle.
I calculated everything.
I know, I'm not supposed to, there's smoking here.
The interesting thing is, is that Tempanogus is a bit, bigger school, yet in every boundary change that is presented, we're moving more kids into Rocky Mountain. It's the, it's the smaller school, but we're putting more kids in it. Yeah, I think, I think going back, I think there was, and, and you can shift this, there was a desire to make sure that the middle schools fed the high school in feeder pattern. And that, that is what's forcing that.
Yeah.
Middle school change.
And just to finish, you guys have heard me, thank you for listening to me over and over. I, I feel like the impact is the same in the scenarios, because right now you're impacting twenty-five per, well, I mean you're impacting part of J R Smith and part of Daniels Canyon, seventy-five and twenty-five are the numbers basically we got of, the division between the elementary schools of who will be split. So basically, you're affecting two whole elementary schools and if you only wanna look at the parts, you know, you could, you could just say I'm affecting one, seventy-five and twenty-five from both. So I do feel like the impact is the same. I feel like everybody's proximate, they're, they're two miles away. But I am prioritizing the high school drivers over the middle schoolers on a bus for proximity. And like I've said, I think it's a straight shot for J R Smith at lights, one hundred south, five hundred north, straight shot to the front and back of the high school as opposed to Willer Park. And I, I get what you're saying, but I think B is more right. It honors more things like the feeder patterns and everything I've said, so I am asking you to vote for that and that's where I'm at.
Let's set a date.
Yes, what I, what I'm hearing from, from the board is, yeah. Unless anybody wants to change is, um, we'll, we'll, we'll check on uh, H in the hearing and stuff like that, but we did beforehand, but we'll, we'll recheck again. But I'm not hearing that we're going back out for another thirty day with a new proposal. I'm hearing we're, we're kinda going in a little bit possibly between D and H, but H is the basis of what we're gonna do. So, um, so as far as re-putting out for another hearing, um, cause B's not out for a hearing right now.
Right.
Um, we would have to make a decision here to put B out for a hearing and that would be a hearing, but I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, is that, um, we're gonna stay more where we are. Um, and we'll check to make sure we don't need to put out for another hearing. Um, but, but, but we already did, but we'll, we'll kinda double check that, that we'll just come back in a few days and, or when you're available and vote.
But we've heard, I mean you guys said H, they said modified H, I guess what are we voting on?
I'm with the modified H, I'm with the modified H.
What they drew up there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for bringing that.
Where the?
The I center ne- I'll call it the I center neighborhood, pulling that over to, yeah, I'm, I'm with Jake on that.
And Brad, where are you at? Cause I, I, I guess I don't wanna get there.
I don't know where Brad, yeah, this is gonna be a very interesting answer.
But remember, we have a majority. Not that Brad doesn't matter.
Brad wants to split it down Center Street from one mountain to the next now. So we're splitting midway in half.
I, I'm, I'm interested in that scenario, I'd like to see the numbers.
Anybody watching, I never said that. To be clear, I never said that.
Yeah, we'll draw it the other way. I'm just keeping track of time, sorry. I knew we, a few of us have a hard start.
I think the reality is, is that they have a majority to say a plan H. Even though it wouldn't go anywhere, I would like to see what I will call a plan B plus to take Waltsburg.
Second.
So, cause, um, if you, if you look, if you look straight at numbers, straight at the numbers and that's it, B to Brianna's point that she made previously is the most logical one from a numbers perspective.
And that being said, from our initial survey, enrollment balance was the number one voted priority. And I get they were like two percents away, one was twenty-seven, one was twenty-six, one was twenty-five, but enrollment balance is the number one priority from your community. So I would be interested in seeing that.
But you have a majority, so let's set a date.
Have a majority.
I mean, is anybody on the phones?
Okay, next week is, uh, it's not gonna be Tuesday.
Our current scheduled meeting is?
Eighteenth?
The eighteenth, two and a half weeks.
Let's try and go earlier.
Could even do it Monday if you wanted.
I have family pictures Monday, I can't be here Monday, I know. Ready for my close up.
Election Day is Tuesday, Tuesday is out next week. That's election day.
What day are you good, Brad?
The following week I am out twelfth through the fourth.
What do you have next, what does everybody have next week?
Wednesday is an option for me.
Wednesday?
The fifth.
Brad?
Uh, Wednesday could ma- could be a thing.
Cory?
I can do Wednesday.
Brianna?
I can do Wednesday, I might have to move a dental appointment, but I could, I could do it.
Wednesday.
This is somebody in town, should we ask them right now?
Dr. Torres?
What's that?
That's fine.
Uh, what time, like five, six?
Your meetings have to be held after.
Work hours. And then I could go to the dentist, so yes, perfect.
So six thirty?
Yeah.
Great. Six thirty on Wednesday?
Wednesday, November fifth at six thirty. Anybody else good?
So there'll be public comment section and a vote, essentially.
Yes, did you say six or six thirty?
Public comments is general public comment.
Or, that's to six thirty, yeah.
It's not a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a hearing, we are.
But, yeah, so general, uh-huh, we would follow the, the general meeting.
Okay.
So six thirty, November fifth here, right? Are we still having a meeting the eighteenth or I guess we address that later?
Yeah, we've got other things going on. Guess what, we have other things to talk about too.
And just before we leave, I do wanna reiterate some of those people that brought up like program access. Um, I can reach out to them, but I talked about the, the J R O T C with the bus garage and there are answers for some of those people that reached out about, unique situations and scenarios, like with J R O T C and stuff.
Great.
Yeah, I do worry about that J R O T C program and would really love to figure out what that's gonna look like.
I mean, once all this is done, we'll go, we'll go to work on making sure that people are taken care of the very best way we possibly can.
And that's what I would ask, I get you have majority, but you know, we've heard safety, safety, like I wanna make sure we're publicizing safe routes to school, like I do not want any, um. Yeah, right, nobody does, yeah. So just to address the, the, somebody had said maybe a survey impacted populations to see their concerns, we can address them or, but you know where I stand, but if you have majority, then let's address the concerns that remain.
Agree, make sure there's access to programs, um, safety. I love Brianna's idea of maybe doing a little, I don't know, safety campaign, showing them all the different routes that they can take, I don't know. Just whatever we can do afterwards, so. Okay, good job team. We'll move forward, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brad, it's still before ten.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leaving adjourned, thank you.